Everybody had a chance to look at the minutes from, or to approve the agenda, I guess. We have to move on the old business. Joe called with the CDBG well grant and he's running a little bit late. So what we're gonna do is we're gonna move that down to the bottom after the warning sirens.
Bottom of the old business.
Bottom of the old business. Thanks, Chris. He said he would be here, so. Other than that, I have, I have nothing else.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda then?
With the amendment?
With the, with the. Moving of the well grant.
All in favors, or second please. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Old business, approved the agenda has been passed. Approve the minutes from last meeting?
I move to approve the minutes.
Moved and seconded to approve the minutes from last meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion passed. Bill, Franny, you had a chance to look the bills over, my boy?
Yep. Yeah, well, it was a lot worse.
Yeah, it was a lot worse.
Any corrections or discrepancies or changes?
No, the only thing-
He's not lying either.
Just the one that kinda pops out. The wall like hard went down to the bottom there. The pool renovation, that's about almost most of the bill, as a matter of fact. It was eight thousand, six hundred and sixty-nine dollars and ninety-five cents. That's for a lot of that one.
Are we keeping that separate, Franny?
It should be, yeah.
Well, here's what we're doing. Don't mean to interrupt you, Franny, but what we're doing with the, like, you'll see JDS Construction on here. So we write him a check for that and then we take it out of our account at Westside and put it back into this account because that way it runs all through one account-
Correct.
-here. And we've got our accounting. And, you know, if you guys wanna see a list of that stuff, I can print it out pretty easy and bring it in and show you what we spent our money on. And we're about, just about done with getting bills. You know, we've got a few promised amounts that we haven't got in the bank yet, but we'll get it there. And, you know, we're thinking about Will McGosh grant yet. Hopefully that'll come in and we can have some of that so that'll help us get to where we need to be.
Well, when we get to the public forum, I'm gonna ask an update on how we're doing on sales, but I don't wanna discuss it right now on that vacation thing. So everything else is correct?
Yes.
We entertain a motion to approve the bills to be paid?
I'll make a vote.
Second?
All second.
They moved and seconded to accept the bill to be paid. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Okay. WAPA contract.
Well, I don't know who wants to talk about this, but Rob and Ray and I sat in a meeting, not in a meeting really, we sat and watched the webinar. It was about ten minutes long, so if you blank, you missed something. But basically, you know, everybody that I've talked to says that this is something that we should sign. And actually, I went to a meeting on Wednesday with Greg Vassilar. He works for WAPA. And he said that if we sign it, it doesn't really change anything. If we don't sign it, it doesn't really change anything. So he suggested, I mean, he recommended that we sign it.
But after the contract is up in two thousand twenty?
Twenty or twenty-one.
Twenty goes to two thousand fifty.
Right. And honestly, really, what this is saying is if we sign this, it says that before, before the end of our current contract, they will send us another one. That's basically what this is saying.
So we can't lock any prices or nothing?
No.
What they're doing is they're just rounding, 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 rounding it up. That's what we're trying to say. They're just rounding up everybody that's already involved with it.
Trying to get their ducks in a row and board it out.
Before twenty twenty.
Because they're gonna find out if they're gonna lease somebody or, okay.
Well, they wouldn't hire you.
So they can do some laundry.
Now, I did get something. I got a letter from WAPA. And what that says is that we're supposed to talk to the, actually, here's, right here. Oh, no, that's not it.
Right here?
No, you don't have it. I just got it.
Oh.
I don't know what I do, it must be on my desk yet. But anyways, it's a, it's a letter to us asking us if we want to look at purchasing power from the Indian tribes. The Indian tribes are gonna put up a bunch of windmills, or they're looking to put up a bunch of windmills. They sent us a letter asking if we would be interested in purchasing power.
Is that like on the Sloan Iowa side?
Western here, I don't know.
Tell them we got turbine, they can buy. Play old means, is there a building to play a few more wind farm top of the basket?
And I think all they're doing, all this letter is, is just asking if we would be interested in looking at buying power. I mean, it's, it's not a, yes, you know, we're gonna buy this much and at this price. It's just they're fishing to see if anybody is interested.
Price is right.
And I agree with that, I agree with that too. I mean, why not? Why wouldn't we be interested? So.
Look at it.
Yeah.
Long as it doesn't affect anybody else.
What do you do when things aren't turning out?
You know, the meeting that I went to in Dennison with this, with WAPA is, there's a lot of things changing or, or in the works to be changed with the way we get power and-
With the government regulations and-
Well, they, they talk about all kinds of acronyms. They use all kinds of acronyms. And basically, there's pools of customers. And we're in MISO area. And MISO is huge. And WAPA's thinking about getting involved with one of these huge organizations. And they don't know if they wanna get involved with MISO or if they wanna get involved with STP or there's another really little one.
There's another one off other ways. STP is-
So other power pool, it's called. Yeah, right. So they're, they're talking about getting involved in that and so, you know, we're gonna see some changes in the future. We just don't know exactly what they're gonna be, yeah.
Well, you need a vote to, yeah, be certain of this.
Yes, we do.
Okay.
And it, yeah, that's a totally different thing than what I was just talking about, but-
But this is the one you want to sign.
Yeah, the first WAPA contract, we do need to have a vote to, for Steve to sign that.
Okay.
And WAPA talking the same way, they'll, they'll get forced in just like the Mid-America did because the Mid-America didn't, didn't wanna go into MISO to start with. And what was happening is they were, could not get their customers to buy that. They couldn't sell on the open all the extra juice they had, so until they joined MISO.
Yeah, you got-
The government having other short tails.
Good save. But yeah, I mean, there's, there's a whole different world out there. You know, you make this much power and you only use this much. Well, you go out on the open market and sell what you don't use.
Yeah. And you charge three or four or five times as much.
Completely confused.
Yeah.
I move we have Steve signing the contract with WAPA.
I'll say.
They moved and seconded to approve the mayor to sign the contract with WAPA. Roll call vote. Gary?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Daryl?
Yes.
Franny?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Motion passed.
And I will get that other letter from the tribes and I'll have it in your packet next meeting so you guys can look at it and see what it says. I agree with Daryl, I mean, we're always looking, you know.
We've got times about us maybe just sell them all of our power off their wind generator and see what that produces for us as far as demand and-
I think really it probably benefits us more than-
I think you probably might.
That's what, using part of it.
Because that's what killing ourselves. We're picking demand.
Understand what we're doing now?
Yeah. But I'm not sure that I agree with you.
No.
I mean, we'd have to really look at it. You know, if we can, if we can sell it for more than what we're buying it for, obviously, then yeah, I think we should. But I don't know that we can do that.
Well, the other side of it is, is how much does it affect our demand? Because selling and buying it, you know, that's one, the extra cost of energy is one.
Stop getting a peak demand, that's, electricity's a lot cheaper, but you know.
I would think though, and maybe I'm completely wrong, I would think it would lower our demand. If it's running while we're-
It'll run all the time, so it's inconsistent.
See, we have to pay for electricity whether that thing turn or not.
Yeah.
Because we don't, they don't know when it's gonna turn, so.
Yeah. That part I understand.
They figure your demand the day before, I think it's either two or three o'clock in the afternoon the day before for an hour there, how much juice you use. So if you've got a real windy day and you're generating a lot of electricity, you're gonna show that you're not gonna need much juice the next day.
But if the wind doesn't blow the next day-
And then if it blows the next day, then you gotta go out and buy, so you're, you're buying more demand and it's, it's getting you back.
Are we picking every day? They do that every day?
They do it every day.
Every day.
Actually, I read it two to fifteen minutes.
Yeah.
They got a long time, but they do it, it's a peak time, they think it's three o'clock in the afternoon.
When the electricity went off the other day, they, they knew where it was. Yeah. They called up the generator one morning.
This is something to worry about because, and I don't know that they can give you a, you know, when Andrew Ross was here, that one thing, we asked him that question, he said, "I don't know."
Yeah. I can talk to Billy Cutser.
I'll talk to Billy Cutser, he wants to try and find out if it was a real windy day if he wouldn't pay us to shut the, shut that windmill down for that hour.
Well, I haven't. You know, the other thing is, you know, I mean, if, if that's what we could do, you know, it might be just a trial and error thing.
Yeah.
I don't even know how we could measure it, you know, to, if we could run a, you know, a two-month-
Report?
Report on it, you know, just to see what-
What it generates?
We know what it generates, then what we would get for it, then how that, if we didn't have that, you know, if we just didn't have that-
How effects, oh, effects are named.
If we didn't have that effect in our demand, what it would be, you know, I, I don't know. And summertime's not a great time to do it because it doesn't generate as much in the summer.
Yeah, that's for sure.
And see, and I don't know how much our, I was gonna say there once, but how much of the gain charge is actually changed from month to month? You don't see it from day to day, we're monthly.
Don't we overproduce sometimes though? We don't, we lose that too?
Well, no.
We don't ever overproduce? There's time.
Maybe very slim, I mean-
I think we, what I, we looked back, Chris, was it like twelve percent or something like that?
It's about seventeen, right? Sixteen to seventeen percent.
It wasn't, yeah.
Two million, too many kilowatts out of ten.
No, we live at, yeah, we live at the amount there, so.
Okay. Any other questions on the contract?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna talk to Andrew Ross and Billy Cutser. And what I'm gonna do is see if they can do what Rob asked, if they can go back and look at-
I know, you sell, you aren't gonna get half.
Yeah.
But it's just something-
But yeah, see if it, you know, if we can go back and look and see what it would have done had we taken that out of there, what would it have done to our demand? And what would that actually ultimately have done to our bill?
Right.
Because yeah, I mean, if we, if we can save some money, then why not?
If we sell that thing, Rob, then we don't have to have that hundred and some thousand in the way. For that backup, if something goes to hell with it?
Well, you want, that's making your money, you might want it.
I mean, if we don't own, if we sell-
A hundred thousand gotta have for the service on it because if the gearbox goes down, that's a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars.
What I'm saying is if we sell it, not just the electricity to the generator.
Oh, yeah.
If we sell the whole factory, then we don't need that.
If you're two million kilowatts, how do you lose money? I know the peak catches you, but there's a lot of days that it don't catch you either, right?
True.
We get a peak every month, we're, we hit a peak. We're always paying, we're paying for the high demand. And once you hit it, stays that way the whole month.
Yeah, I understand that, so.
It's just like, don't stay in three months till they view.
Yeah, and don't use it for four months or six months.
And there's one or two months, we don't even get any, we don't even from means for electricity used, just demand.
We'll obtain four or five thousand dollars in the manager. So, you know, I mean, it's just-
We just wanna see the numbers, where they come out.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And the good months, the good would be winter months, you know, if we could do it in January, February, numbers-
Which I don't know why they wouldn't be able to, I mean, we've got them now.
Yeah, those would be better numbers to analyze than June, July because the air's denser and it produces more electricity.
Yeah, that's when we use our most is January.
And it's also when we produce the most electricity.
Okay. Has the most electric heat around then too.
True, I mean, the whole three days will go down.
Curts report discrepancy.
Okay, there was a question last month on the curts report. And what I did was I went back and I, I looked at the curts report of two twenty-nine, twelve, and then I compared that to three thirty-one, twelve. And if you just go from the top down, the very top number, there was a difference of, you can see all the numbers. You can see the positive thirteen thousand dollars that was in our cash. Positive twenty thousand, negative ten thousand, positive nine hundred and twenty. That should be a positive twenty-five hundred and a positive sixty-nine, seventy-seven, oh, eight is what that should be, but it's not. So I came up with a difference of sixty-eight cents total. So I'm not sure where the discrepancy was in our last meeting, but looks to me like we're off sixty-eight cents, which I think is probably-
My new, my new school.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not gonna look for that. So I don't know if you guys have any other questions and Ray and I kinda talked about this and I'm not sure exactly where the numbers came from last time, but I think this is, is how it was done.
So everything is balanced up, right, this enough?
Well, these two are old.
Right.
These are old and they've already been approved, but since the question was asked, I wanted to go back and look at it and see why there was a difference.
But you said you were, you were still looking real hard to make sure that every, all the accounts were all reconciled and everything was complete.
Right.
So it's-
Oh, yeah, uh, yeah.
Correct.
Up until the last two weeks at-
Correct. Any questions for Chris?
And maybe we should-
I think that's what happened last time, subtracting one from the other, that's kind of different numbers.
Yeah. Well, that can happen. I, but I wanted to, I mean, the question was asked, so I wanted to go back and look at it myself. That's what I came up with, so.
Questions, concerns?
Well, I move to approve the curts report.
I'll say.
And move and second to accept the curts report? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Curts report has been approved. Warning siren, tell you, Chris?
Yeah. You guys can see the two that we had in there. And we got another one that's five oh three tonight. But I didn't make copies because I don't know for sure. This one is, the two that we have now, the two that you guys have been able to look at are a hundred and twenty-eight and a hundred and thirty decibels. And you can see where they will cover. The one, the bid that we got is a hundred and eighteen decibel. And the coverage is, is quite a bit different, actually.
That's the one we don't have.
That's the one that you guys don't have, I'm looking at it right now. And there's no installation on this bid. So I'm not sure we wanna even look at this, but I'll pass it around and let you guys look at it.
Was there two bids from this person?
Yeah, we should, we should probably go over that again too. The one with all my scribbling notes on the bottom of it? The first, the first two pages of numbers have to be added together. One's, one's for the siren and one's for the installation of the siren. So that together total is about eighteen thousand, eight hundred dollars. It really is, Steve, I don't, I didn't realize it would be that much different, but it really is quite a deal.
The other one's more.
Yeah, it's- This one is seventeen thousand, something, looks like two hundred and maybe.
Like it doesn't cover our town, moving on.
Yeah, we should do better, one more thousand, that's a little-
Yeah, but, okay, Gary, look at that one. And it's, the, if you compare that to the RC Systems, which is the lowest one that it's holding. Yep. Without the installation of this one, it's also thirteen thousand, two hundred dollars. So, and so it's almost identical to that one.
To the head one.
To the, the one you're holding in your hand right now.
Yeah.
Plus it covers a lot more area.
Probably too much there.
Yeah. Without the installation, it's almost identical.
That's where it- This, this one here won't cover that as much.
Yeah, no, it's a little different.
Actually, jobs, this is the smaller one, it's covering more than the hundred and thirty is. See what, there's barrels and barrels of auto.
Well, maybe not this one.
One of them covers, covers over Main Avenue.
Yeah. Okay, well, yeah, I guess both set in the same spot to represent-
Yeah, and really, you know, I checked, I checked, Franny, on the heights of our town. Up here where it's at right now is twelve hundred and seventy-three feet. And up there where you're thinking about putting it is twelve hundred and seventy-one, two foot difference. So there's a two foot difference.
That'll reach you, I should, I know. I'm just thinking that the- Well, I know if you're living over there, the word sunk and things from school all the time, the, the moon whistle.
And, and the highest point in town is right up by Twilight Acres, that's twelve hundred and eighty-five. So, I mean, you're talking about ten, fifteen feet difference, it's not a big deal.
No, but at least they compared apples to apples, that's what's-
Yeah.
Yeah, I do. I mean, I think, I think we need to do something, guys. And I, and I didn't talk to, who did I talk to? Joe Heinright. And he said that we can still apply for the Gilrenzi grant if we've already started a project, so.
So it's RC Systems, this is the installed price then, sixty-five, right?
Sixteen-five, yeah. You see the thirty-three hundred? That's with total installation, including a fifty-five foot pole. And I actually think if you look at the other one, it's only a fifty foot pole.
Yeah, it is.
But it covers a lot of area, don't it?
Well, it's got two more decibels, so.
Well, I've seen such, yeah, Gary, maybe do that.
Huh? I don't think it's, I mean, it pretty much blankets our town, so I think we'll stay there. Then it even gets, you know, some of the people by the windmill, most of them.
Well, I would entertain a motion on which one you'd like, Ray.
One question, are you sure where you're gonna put it and not even book there or are you gonna just stay here?
Well, I don't think we're a hundred percent sure of that. There will, there will have to be electricity there.
Yeah.
So we would have to, we would have to run electricity up there. Mark, do you know where their electricity is close to that?
The alley, we can come off a pole or the alley, it doesn't matter.
So it's not too far?
We can come off a pole, south, you're talking about your water tower?
Yeah.
We can come off on them poles to the south and then just more underneath the road.
More in the road.
Yeah. Subtransform there on that pole, get power right there.
We just gotta make sure we don't have any pipes that are still probably coming through to that water tower.
Well, that's what we'd have to locate and watch.
You know what I mean? There could be a-
There's no piping there, yeah.
There's a piping there. I would think.
Just like that doctor, they're not even big data.
No, see, I mean, there's gotta be somewhere out there.
Yeah, it's too bad it couldn't build that off most concrete pads. It isn't gonna go anywhere.
That'd be the thing I'd do.
Yeah. I'd make a motion that we go take the bid with RC Systems, sixteen thousand, five hundred dollars for a storm warning siren.
Second? I'll second. They moved and accept, moved and seconded to accept RC Systems for sixteen thousand, five hundred dollars for the warning siren? Roll call vote, Gary?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Daryl?
Yes.
Franny?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Mosquito Air Authorization.
Oh, we gotta go-
Oh, no, I'm sorry, Joe's here now. Joe? Front and center, my boy.
All right.
CDBG well grant.
As far as the test well, everything's in, we got the pizometer in Friday. Was it before lunch, after lunch? Yeah, around lunch. Yeah.
I think it was a little after lunch because I was up there.
I think about two. The big difference is we ended up going about a hundred fifty foot deep. And I think the reason they went that deep, he was a little worried as far as the sand that they did run into was a little finer than they wanted, you know, maybe it probably looked a bit coarser. Material would've worked a little better. So they went ahead and went down and actually hit limestone at a hundred fifty. And I think that's gonna give them a little bit more of a column of water too to try to see what we can get out of it as far as pumping. You know, we're gonna try to get, try to get close to three hundred out of that if we can out of that six inch, and use that to try to equate what we can get out of a actual production well. What size of that casing may have to be, rent the casing. So they were gonna start pumping today, but I don't know what happened. I got an email early this morning about six or something like that, six thirty when we sent, said it's gonna be Wednesday, Thursday, that'll be after your test pump. So we're gonna find out. Positive thing is, there's static water level at twenty-six foot down. But like you said, big thing is that fine sand, how quick will it come in when they start test pumping? You know, will it keep up coming in through that finer sand? But we got the pizometer about fifty, fifty foot north, you know, and they'll use that to gauge the drawdown to see, see once we start pumping if it's gonna pull it down or if we got a pretty good volume down there that we can draw from.
Are there water samples pulled on that or that, we'll do that when they draw, when they try to draw it down?
Yeah, they, we'll probably do a water sample here at the end, probably when they test pump. That'll be about another, I think Bill told me, we didn't have it actually in, in the bid, but he said just to do those kind of minimal testing was gonna be probably twenty-five, thirty bucks. And I think they'll take it down with them, drop it off in Omaha. And so they'll, you know, do what they do about-
Twenty-five, thirty dollars per test?
Well, just for the one test, they're gonna run it, try to, try to see what's all in it to make sure we're handling it in a simple, different way.
Nitates and metals and stuff?
Yeah, they call like the thirteen parameters, I had to get the list plus-
Arsenic, that's one, I know.
Arsenic is seven, but he thought it was at about a twenty-five, thirty dollar test is on it.
So does that mean, Joe, that there's a hundred and twenty-five feet of water there or not necessarily?
Well, I would think, I mean, it's probably sitting on top of that limestone. You know, he was a little worried, like I said, with the formation. He, he tried with two different bits to try to punch through the limestone. You know, that way there would've been a little bit more to draw from, but he burned up two bits and couldn't get through it, so they stopped at a hundred fifty.
Did he try it on the second well or just on the one one?
Uh, the pizometer, I think he went down to the hit rock and probably just stopped.
Yeah, that was a hundred and fifty, too.
But that was a hundred fifty also.
They didn't do the second site though, Gary?
Mm-hmm.
They didn't drill at the second site?
No, no. These two are two right there.
Yeah.
So that water must be sitting on that limestone bit.
That's what we're thinking. You know, so as long as there's, up to the north, you know, as long as it's gonna feed it from north there, being there any kind of sloping from the northwest. Hopefully there's some water there that we had. I mean, we'll know, like I said, when we test pump, we're looking at, they'll do like a step, step test, they'll do like a step, step test, I think, where they go to different, different flows first for a couple hours, and then we'll do a twelve hour continuous pump, just to see, see what the drawdown does, keep record of it.
Now, you got an eight inch casing, if you go bigger, if you need more, you go bigger casing then?
Mm-hmm, you know, and then, that all depends on that gravel pack around the casing, too. I don't know how big a hole they had, around the six inch casing, but I don't know if they were eight or ten, as far as the hole itself.
It was probably about like ten, probably about ten.
So, then you, you'd have a couple inches of gravel all the way around, and that, they packed it with, so.
But they can't tell how long has that been, would be good for it?
Well, hopefully, we'll know something when we start pumping that test, test pumping, to see if, to see if she starts dropping in that pizometer that's.
To see if you dropped them, or.
Yeah, see if it starts drawing it down, that'll give us an idea.
Okay.
But I know with that, they bid, they bid that, we had sixty-five foot of test hole, and then sixty each of both the pizometer and the test well. We're gonna end up at a hundred fifty, I don't have a number from him yet, I think that's only three items that should change. We're looking at about, uh, on the plus side of about fifty, two hundred more. So, we'd be looking at about a seventeen thousand dollar test hole, a test well, compared to the eleven thousand, seven, thirty-eight, fifty that they bid. But there again, I guess, I don't know, maybe there isn't a plus side to it, but you can look at, I know one of those bids that we got was like fifteen, fifteen something.
And they were all by the foot also, so.
Correct.
They, and they had to go down that far, just added that much.
You know, did we need to go down that far, well, I guess go down that far, then we know what we got.
Yep, you bet.
We know what we got, and we know what it produced, or at least get a good idea.
That doesn't necessarily mean that we have to have a hundred and fifty foot well.
I don't think so, no.
Is that right?
Yeah, I mean, we're gonna, we're gonna work with them guys and find out, you know, what kind of recommendations, what they, yeah, on the drawdown, we'll know. Figure out how long the screen, I think they cut a little off that screen they put in. They probably put an eighteen, sixteen or eighteen foot of screen, probably down.
Five, what, right, three, four foot they cut off that?
Was it that much, okay, so about fourteen, fifteen foot of screen they got in there now, on that test well, but. I mean, it's positive, I guess, I mean, they kinda asked the same thing, you know, it, it, hit that rock, he said you're probably gonna hit it up on that second hole. You know, we had further west.
Same thing.
Same thing, you know, and just be going a little deeper, too, to hit it, so it's probably not gonna be any different, so.
I guess one thing that we have to remember is these guys do this kind of thing all the time.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, you know, so.
Yeah, this particular driller, I've been with Jensen for thirty years.
Yeah.
So, but I know when they got the test hole done, he kinda asked Rick and Mark and I, kinda scratched our heads a little bit, but, you know, what other options do we have?
Yeah.
We just, we just will sink the casing, get the gravel around it, and try to pump it. We're not gonna know unless you try.
Yeah, if we don't, then we have to go east.
Yeah, you know, and that's gonna get expensive there.
We gotta condemn land and everything, and let's try to get something for the east.
But again, you're still talking to people that are used to fifty foot wells.
Yeah.
That's what's got us back in it.
Same quality, really.
Yeah, it's just that we can't drill where we always have.
Right.
It has nothing to do with water or anything else, other than we're gonna have a barrier around it. Which is typical. It just costs you more money, you know, I mean, that's, in the long run, the regulations cost you more money. You get the project completed.
Anything else to add, no?
Yeah, I don't have any questions on the well, I don't know if we wanna bump a little bit on meters, Chris, that's all kinda what we've been finding out on that.
Yeah, um, you know, I didn't, I didn't get a chance to talk to, uh, Rex today. Um, but Joe and I've been looking around at water meters, you know? We wanted to go with just a Badger meter, and we found out that there's only one, one person in basically.
Distributor for this area.
Basically, this whole area, that can sell Badger meters, so we can't do that, we can't just say we want just a Badger meter. Uh, so, we're looking at another kind of meter, and what did I say that was, uh?
And that was with, uh.
Used to be Rex, wasn't it?
Yeah. That they were gonna try to sell them.
Used to be Amco, and now it's, uh.
I can't think of the name now either. Cause the only other choice we got is Census, and I know you guys don't like that, you had trouble with Census.
Yeah, right.
Didn't I hear the other day that there's only one meter we can put in that our system can read?
Yeah, uh, but that was when we just wanted a Badger meter. And that's, and after I talked, after I talked to that guy, then I went and asked another guy, if this is, is this true, that they're the only people that can supply us with this meter? And he said, yes, it is, and then, well, you can't get a good bid with that, so we can't do that.
Well, I did find out, too, on, I think that was, man, work, one of the guys there talked about, we can use other meters, as long as they got a, uh, they said they had to have three wires, as far as to use the transmitter for the radio read.
Right.
So.
We just need something that will match up with our NBRF system, and this other meter, used to be an Amco meter, and I can't remember what he called it. That meter will also match up with this, so, uh, we just, we just need to have different kinds of, be able to take bids for different kinds of meters, so we can get more than one bid, cause obviously, if you can only get one bid, you're gonna.
Lock yourself in.
You're not gonna get the best price, most likely, so.
Do we know how many, how many meters we need?
Yeah, we, we don't have a, we don't have a real good number on that yet, I mean, we've got a guess, probably. And I don't really know how we do that, other than Rick and I sit down and just, and Mark probably just sit down and try to figure out who's got a new meter and who doesn't.
I know who's got all, all of his new meters, we haven't got them installed and ran them down. Someone's just need to have the heads taken out. His meters new.
So, it shouldn't be a difficult process, just a time consuming one, really?
But I think once we get this test pumping done, too, we'll know more on that, and we'll just start bringing everything together. Our electrical guys, you know, we signed, kinda got him going on his part of it, so they're supposed to be working on the electrical part. We'll get information from the well, so we start working on that, and then we're gonna get things finished up on the water mains, and try to pull everything together next month.
I have a question on the water mains, um, there's a couple of empty lots. Rob's got a map of it right there.
Are these the ones that go to the other side of the, on the main street?
Mm-hmm.
Empty lots over here? These are the hookups for that?
Correct.
Okay.
Maybe we'll talk about that when we come up there, just north of the store. That we make sure we tie the oil back in, too.
When they're gonna do the test pumping?
Wednesday, Thursday.
Okay.
Would you need to have anything voted on or agreed upon before our next meeting, then, Joe?
Shouldn't, in that case, and that was the thing, we're trying to push for your second meeting in May, to set up approved plans, specs, and then set a bid date probably for your second meeting in June.
In which case, we need to figure out when that is, cause that's our worry I think.
Twenty, seven.
Twenty eighth is our worry, I think.
Yeah, right.
Jod it around?
Maybe the seventh and the twenty-first, or?
Seventh is not the.
No, that ain't the second Monday.
Yeah, the fourteenth is the twenty eighth, I said.
We were discussing that, too.
Oh, yeah?
He said, we probably just forget about that meeting. And not now.
Oh, yeah, okay, I was thinking the twenty ninth, that'd be easy, but no, can't do that, can't get there.
Don't you bowl? Yeah, we can say.
Can I just go earlier?
Yeah, we can say that, maybe. Of course, you know, that's a good, that's a good point, if we have to do something earlier, we can do it earlier, too, then.
Yeah, if you got more, everything's coming together, and we're moving farther along.
We just need to keep that in mind, as to what our target date is for that meeting, so we have everything together, ready to go.
Yep. Okay, anything else for Joe?
So, like I said, good, good news.
Yeah, there's water.
No more towards the end of the week. Uh, Wednesday and Thursday.
We have oil, we have water.
Yeah, supposed to be. Step pumping first, you know, Wednesday, and then jump into the twelve hours. Yeah.
You always don't Florida, yeah.
Put a filter on, put a filter on.
At the end of it, Joe?
I think it looked pretty good, once they kinda started, you know, they pushed air down to try to clean it a little bit, and towards the end, it was starting, it was starting to look pretty good.
It looked pretty clean after a while.
It was getting clearer.
I, I have one question, honestly, we're talking generator, right, for this well?
Yes.
Talking generator, we, we probably won't put the generator right by this well, but well, we've got, is there another, can we wire someplace in where it's up by our.
Trigplant?
Right, we'll have something.
Yep, we probably had it right north of that, the, the tension.
We sure don't wanna sit in there by the pool.
No, no, I don't.
And he talked about it, too, we probably put a noise, you know, noise reduction, you know, and have a hood on it to where it'll, it'll be pretty quiet.
Hopefully, you don't need it.
Right. Thing is, though, I think, you know, we'll make sure the radiator's facing east away from the homes, I mean, so that might be a little noise on the east side, but basically, far enough south of the pool. Typically, I think you wanna.
If you're not, though, you're not gonna be sweating, so.
No.
Will there be some, probably some regulations where you have to run it so often, every.
Yeah. Yeah, typically, you have an automatic, you know, the automatic starter, and a little exercise, so you can set that.
When our fire station cycles once a week.
Yeah, that's probably about typical, I know some of these ones we do with lift stations will then cycle about once a week.
Run longer than once a month, or?
This is, uh, basically all this, that we are gonna authorize, uh, aviation specialties through, uh, mosquito control company to fly on, uh, mosquito, insect, yeah, totally.
There a cost after that, Mr.?
Nope.
Yeah, what a cost to put in paper.
Yeah.
mosquito control will come out. It's three thousand, is that something?
I would move, accept aviation specialty when we have.
I'll second that.
They've moved and seconded to accept aviation specialties as our mosquito repellent people, uh, do you wanna say that?
Actually, what is authorized, authorizing them to do it.
Zero.
They have to get air, air flight.
Yeah.
Approval and all that stuff.
Uh, all in papers, say aye?
All in aye.
All opposed, nay? Motion carried? Summer help? Rick?
What, maybe you?
Summer help?
I feel like, if we can get you some help.
Uh, Rick, do you have any suggestions on who? Well, we got a, we got a couple more today, didn't we, Tony?
Yeah.
We had three of them that got in here, uh, quite a while back, and then we got a couple more today.
Couple of yous here, don't know how, what grades they're in or anything, I think one graduated, but a couple of these here, do we have age on some of these guys?
They, they don't, it is required.
Well, I remember we thought a deal that says education. Well, here, here, it says, uh, two thousand eight to two thousand twelve, regulating, see, got a diploma, so that's, that's in there, so I mean, yeah, yeah. I think they're all actually seniors.
Oh, yeah.
Except this one here, but I don't know for sure.
I mean, I just, you know, some guys are little teenagers, uh, growing up, but they're seniors.
How many do we need, too? This, this is what I wanna do, cause we've been running a problem with them, since they're in high school, we gotta go do this, and go on and do this to them three days a week. Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, one, and Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, the other one. And then if one of them goes on a boundification, we need them, we can bring them on Thursday and Friday, or something like that. And that way, we can get to them, get a couple jobs for kids, cause it's hard for kids around, it's.
Jobs. Yeah, that makes sense.
That's just something I'm throwing out there. Maybe give them a little summer, too, so they're working their whole summer away.
You better keep track of all, obviously, if you get too many.
Yeah, I know.
So, how many you wanna hire?
Two is the.
Two. And Witten Austin have worked for us before.
Yep.
And they do their job.
Yep.
You would hire them again.
Yep.
And I don't know why we have to leave these other people, they're good people, but if you got somebody already trained, wants to do a job.
I think we should take into account how this was filled out, though.
Yeah, I see that one.
There wasn't much effort put into that, though.
It would.
Yeah. And I didn't work with them, so.
I'm doing full seniors this year, too, so.
I think, isn't Aaron Rolf a senior also? Or gonna be a senior, maybe, I.
Yeah, he's a junior. He's a junior, I think.
Right. He's another.
Sixteen.
He'd be sixteen. Yeah, cause Aaron was hired one other time, he was only fifteen. For, for a month or two or something, so he could, after he found out that, then.
Give it to the sheriff.
I've got the three here.
Who you?
Yeah, that's one.
Who do they have, who do they have to, who do they have to, who do they have? You said you got a couple more, didn't you?
Yeah, you've got them there.
Oh, who, oh, I do?
Um.
Corbin Haderman's here.
Corbin Haderman and Josh Skirlem.
I believe he's fifteen, and then Josh Skirlem's fifteen.
Is my reading, Skirlem is my group, is that correct?
I hear some stuff, right?
Hold on, but that's where you were at, too. Yep. There they are, right here. Yeah, see, I hit them, I hit them steep, too, now this is very. But, you know, I just think if somebody takes the time to do that, then, you know, they maybe want the job a little bit more.
Well, I didn't even have to hire them for part of the work either. I don't have to hire them, they're probably not. Hey, to me, you know, it's, it's, uh, a lot easier to train somebody that's already trained.
Do you have anything else?
Yeah, I have Rick here.
All kinds of jobs ready, didn't he?
I would, yes, yeah. This one?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I could keep the other guy, I don't have to hire him for three days a week.
I'll give counsel more to make sure those.
You guys make a decision.
Haderman, I'm sure, has done some mowing up the cemetery.
Yeah, yeah, he's definitely done some mowing, I think.
I saw, I think I laid up the rips, which ones he wants to. If he's, I've listed a couple before. These ones. He's a fucking work with them.
Can I do it?
Yeah. Unless he's got somebody who's fully against or something.
As long as we don't drive our vehicle like he does, dude.
Yeah.
You have two you recommend, don't you, Nick?
I'd like to do Aaron Rolf and Austin Steinke.
Motion that we have Austin Stein camp and Aaron Rolf as part-time employees.
They moved in second to accept Aaron Rolf and Austin. Stein camp as part-time employees for the city of Wall Lake, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed nay? You got your two?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
What's the rate of pay?
I believe it's eight bucks an hour. I have to let you know, Curtis, but I think it's eight dollars an hour.
In wage?
Yeah. No.
I think it's eight, so. And their main duties will be mowing?
Yep.
Some mowing.
General labor.
Parting streets. Thank you.
Okay, hazard mitigation representative, Chris, you wanna explain that to them a little bit?
Yeah, the, um, region twelve is asking for each county, each city in each county to have a hazard mitigation representative. And, uh, not sure the total extent of the position, but, um, there's been a big push lately to have any kind of a disaster plan. And so that's what this person will be, um, heading, is, uh, is our mitigation process. This doesn't necessarily mean that this person will be the head of, if there is a disaster, this will, this person will be the head of that disaster, but, um, the process that we're gonna go through, get to the plan, this person's gonna be the head of, so. My personal feeling on this is since Mayor Drubin Gay has gone through the ICS three hundred training, uh, he should be the guy to do this, and him and I have talked about it. And I believe he's okay with that yet, we haven't talked about it for a couple weeks, but.
Want to make a motion that we make Steve Drubin here hesitant, hazard mitigation committee representative.
Second?
I'll second that.
They moved in second to appoint me as the hazard mitigation committee representative for the city of Wall Lake, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed nay? You want me to sign my own?
And actually, you know what, it's, it's more, it's more than just cities too, cause.
It's basically, it's designed to be county.
Thank you, well.
Eset, Eset County had to do it, also the school system, and I'm, I'm the representative for the school.
Yeah, we've been in the lot the last couple of years, just with the Joplin and.
Yeah, Mapleton.
Creston, or, yeah, Creston.
Electric pole replacement.
This is something that we've been, Mark and I have been talking about for a little while here, and, uh, we've got some poles that, and I think we've been doing it every year, have we not, Mark? We're trying to do it every year. We've got some poles that are in pretty bad shape, and, uh, Mark talked to Larry Suter, and Larry said, sure, I'll get you a bid, and then, uh, gave us this, and, um, thank goodness I was sitting down when I opened it, or when I saw it, cause, uh, I think it's a little high. So, basically, you know, kinda just wanna get this information in front of you, and Mark, I don't wanna stay a hundred. We're, we're probably gonna try to get a couple more bids.
I mean, I have a couple more guys.
What did you say, Frank?
We're gonna have to get a couple more.
Is, is this just labor, or is this?
Yeah, that's not.
Labor and their equipment, I didn't know if this was putting that wire or not.
No, we got poles, cross arms, and conductor on top of that.
So, yeah, you had another. Do we wanna put other poles in if we ever change Wall Lake?
Well, we're thirty-five now, and I think thirty-five is enough, let's do, I'll go forty foot.
Well, as long as it's legal, I don't care.
Well, I'll, I'll find out.
Yeah.
We go forty foot, I can't reach because I moved, John.
That's another issue, but. Probably should get there one anyway.
Well, I think when we do this, we should figure out cross arms, you know, everything we're gonna need for this job, that, and do a whole package bid.
Make them bid the whole thing.
Yeah.
So, like, five, five holes.
Right, well, Mark's got a, you've got a couple of contractors in mind right now, don't you?
Yeah.
I'm buying them.
Mark, Greg, Vee won't work with us.
They're too busy.
Not for something like this.
But they got a contractor there now.
They're six o'clock time.
Twelve or fourteen miles poles, there's another contractor that dealing with these poles, I have cookies, so I'm gonna try to get together and see if we can't get something.
Long as they're here.
Yeah, long as they're here, you know, I might achieve, and then Larry said he's so busy, he don't know when he wants to get here, or when he can get here, I think he does, doesn't wanna do it, because it's so high. He just bumped it up, you know?
It's worth my time if you give me this. I'll let somebody else.
Well, I said, unfortunately, we need, we need to bid the whole thing.
Yeah.
You know, supplies and everything.
I guess somebody doesn't wanna bid the supplies, but these guys out here, maybe we can get the supplies.
Yeah. Okay, I'll, I'll work on that tomorrow.
How many, how many more bids would you like, Franny, two or three?
Sure. You gotta put it out there, and whatever you get for bids is what you get, so.
More the merrier.
We're talking fifteen poles, right, says there?
Yeah, I saw it.
That would be two.
But still, I don't know, two.
And unfortunately, which is, you know, you know, like I say, we're like, they all gotta be bidding apples to apples, so I don't know if we need to have somebody else look at it, and.
It's back it.
It's back here, then you're gonna get a, charge there too, but.
See if you can get us two to three more, make sure, like Franny said, you do them apples to apples, get everybody on the same page. Okay? We'll move on.
Didn't, didn't, can we come in and do a survey or study for us?
I thought.
Yeah.
Yeah, for line loss and that.
Whatever happened to all that information, where did that ever end up?
Bob.
He's got it?
No.
He's, are they gonna ask me?
Me.
Me?
I didn't say me.
Me, Bob Meaden.
Oh, okay, he's within him.
And then he'd be.
No, I asked him about that a couple times, Franny, and I never got any, I never got any reply from him.
We could get a, something out of them, you should be able to look at, see what we're gonna do.
Yeah.
Yeah, cause where the long is that?
Yeah.
Didn't you go with him when he was on inspecting that that night?
That was more, um.
Line loss and all that stuff?
Um, infrared camera stuff, with bad connection.
Oh, he?
Yeah, he.
Never saw.
I mean, we just went.
Never saw a deal.
He should have.
Just call you if, if we can.
Cross reference, that with over ten of them, so we can, well, I don't know.
And he might know more contractors, too.
See, we belong to that organization, I don't think he charged us to come up here.
I don't think he did, and he comes up there just walking, we can't.
Well, if you call him, he'd come up and, and he's long as number. Okay, anything else? Sidewalk match?
Well, I thought it would give that an idea, my idea is maybe put in three thousand dollars a city, figure out how many running feet, uh, Chris and I talked about. A volunteer deal, a yard of cement will do about twenty-seven running feet, and maybe having matching funds, first come, first served, when the three thousand's gone for that, for that, uh, year, there's, there's no more money, and if we get some people that will wanna help do the sidewalk, we probably pay for about half on a volunteer basis, and kinda recommend that they upgrade their sidewalks. Is it a good deal, I don't know, but we, we sure got a lot of sidewalk going to pot, and it's, uh, something to think about, I, I think it's, if we, it's a trial deal. We're not forcing anybody to do it, but anybody that does that bad sidewalks, if we pay a, uh, if we could set it up as where you bring in your bill, and, and we pay half of it, when, when the money is gone, there's no more for that year, we should do, we should do eight hundred feet. Alright? It's gotta be six thousand dollars to do eight hundred feet of sidewalk for a year. But, uh, we're not forcing anybody to do it, my idea would not force anybody to do it, but if somebody's got a sidewalk and they're probably, upgrade the sidewalk.
That will only be the main part of it.
Yeah, and it has to be four, it has to be, it's four, four feet wide.
You're gonna do the one going up to your house too.
No.
That's what I mean, I know, that's what I mean, that's just what they need to know.
Yeah, we'd have to put up a set of specs on how, uh, and we could come up with that, if, if we think that's a good idea, I thought I'd throw that out there, you guys, and, and, uh.
Most of the only people that's gonna use it are the people that'll do it anyway.
Ah, true.
We're gonna be quite honest.
Well, they're, they're probably a few people that wouldn't put, put that out there.
You're gonna do yours?
Yeah.
Okay, this one, sure.
Yeah.
Well, you're definitely.
You're gonna make the motion then, aren't you?
I don't really want it. Well, yeah.
If you are gonna force people to do it. No, it's a volunteer deal.
Okay, yeah.
You might as well force people to do it.
Cause, well, the resolution says, or whatever.
Right, code city.
It said code's supposed to have, but we have people tearing them out, well, now, if they tear them out, they're supposed to get a building from that too.
Mm-hmm, and they have to replace.
Yeah.
Yeah, we got a couple spots like Doc's there, he put that garage in now, hopefully that sidewalk goes back in there. Should've been in there when you put that building in, you got the sidewalk replaced, probably didn't do that. Hopefully he won't put it in. But.
He's getting it too, too.
Yeah.
Fill the box.
Yeah.
Find him?
Yeah, no, it's inside the shit.
Fill the shit or something.
I thought it'd be a trial deal, if you guys are in, and again, don't make any difference.
That's something to look at.
It's gotta be some pretty stringent rules, so.
I actually don't think it's a bad idea, but you're right, Franny, I mean, you, it's gotta be, you can do this, and you can do this, and you can do this, and, and that's it.
But just when you, you say matching funds, if somebody comes over, nails a spot twice as high or something.
Well, I think it should be, uh, per foot.
Yeah.
You know, you get, if you put in ten feet, and, and we'll pay for the cement, you're gonna do the labor for example, it ought to be, so, you could get a bill way high.
Yeah.
You could have, you know, some guy could bid it way out of sight, so you wouldn't wanna do that.
Six inch sidewalks in too.
Yeah, it's gotta be four inches, four inches, and, and, uh, it's gotta be in specs.
Ten inches, a hundred feet, hundred bucks a flat.
See, and, and that's probably what Gary kinda talked about, this process would do too.
Yeah. Those tips go down top, huh?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right, but they've got their, yeah, the smudges.
I'd say, you know, put some, some guidelines together and.
Maybe nobody'll take, take advantage of this.
I hate folders.
And maybe, you know, maybe they will.
Somebody will.
Somebody will, you won't. I might.
We got a couple right up along here going up that street there, they are really bad. But I don't know if we could get them to, the one there's on Napton's property, they're in that one spot, there's about half, there's about half the sidewalk gone there. You know where that's at, Hoppy, you seen that, right by, right by Freeze's there, or Ralph.
Oh, it's really.
Yeah, they're really bad there, but. Whether they would take advantage of that, I don't know.
If you get something written down, take it up to them and give it to them.
Oh, Gary and I will sit down and put some guidelines together, and, uh, you know, kinda say this is what we're gonna do, and this is, this is how you're gonna do what you're gonna do.
And bring it back to us.
Yeah, bring it back to the.
Bring it back to you guys.
We could, we could go lower, you know, I mean, I said three thousand, but whatever, whatever's sensible, uh, being, you know, too.
Okay, well done. Public forum, the question I have is how are sales doing on the, uh, the travel voucher?
The bank? Uh, Bank Midwest, um, had twenty to begin with, they're down to, uh, four now. We sold, uh, two hundred dollars worth here on Friday. Gary sold.
I got two hundred dollars worth, plus another guy, another donation for two hundred fifty dollars the other day, so we're, we're ready.
We probably got the thousand dollars paid off by now.
Yeah.
Pretty easy.
Something I, I, cause I've been, when I walk, I put that sign in the way, on the sign, does it say, where, where, what's it for, what's it, I mean, where do you gotta go to get it, or it just says, voucher, either fifty dollars, gives a three, or, you know, should have.
I just assumed it's a travel voucher, for, good for anywhere.
Yeah, well, I mean, but doesn't really tell you where, where do you go to get it, or what's it for, or anything, it just says, you know, and it doesn't.
Cause I asked the same thing, where do you buy them?
Yeah.
When I walked in, I asked Chris the night.
Well, if you, you got it on the sign, you better be walking by if you're gonna read all that.
Well, I, I do, that's standard, cause I got to be close, and I don't have the contacts on anymore when I read it. I'm something like this, I'm real reading.
They did have an ad in the paper two weeks.
Yeah. So, you know, but I just would make a comment there, so.
Take another ticket to pay.
I think if we push a little bit, we could add this pool project.
Oh, Daryl. Curtis, can you shut that camera off?
Where are we at with, uh, as far as funding or?
Within, no, three thousand dollars, oh my gosh, deal comes through.
Just in here, I got something to say, if I could get him, uh, the TIF committee went up and, or, and, hi Johnny.
Is that okay if I sit in on this meeting?
Sure is, went up and, uh, back to sidewalks, that were eligible for TIF, and the TIF committee voted today to put ten thousand dollars.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Rob.
Thank you.
That's gotta get us real close to completion, but.
Well, within, oh my gosh.
Talked about it at the beginning, but they haven't done anything.
Within three thousand.
Right, they need.
Finished product.
If you get this travel thing going up and going, and get it sold hard.
We could cut.
That'll push us over the edge.
This, this is quite a project getting done with, uh, a very real, very little city money. That's good, which is pretty good. Of course, thanks to Hoppy's work.
And Mark.
And Mark, yeah.
Have a nice day.
You're on the ice winner, we'd be in big trouble if we had that, wouldn't we?
Well, they did a lot of work.
Steve?
Yes, yes.
I don't know if this is that important, but the Wall Lake Lions Club did buy a freezer for the pool house, so they want, they want a nice new, uh, freezer for them.
Appreciate that, thank you.
These sheets right here, I did some preliminary numbers on the TIF report that will be coming next week, um, the Wall Lake Industrial Committee will then be presenting a bill in May for the TIF funds that will be due, and that's the figure that you see of the first income figure. That's what it's estimated to be this year, you won't know that until June tenth, that's when all the tax receipts come in. The John and Don, well, thought it would be somewhere near that number. And this is basically all the data. But anyway, the TIF report will be coming next month in May, like it's supposed to, if you're going there, for you to look at, so you can study and, so. If we could get, how much gas or whatever we sell, are, you know, people in town, what percentage of... You know, we got, we got this, we got one that I used, what about...
Only in 2011, that guy, he used twenty seven thou, a hundred and twenty seven thousand eight, I think we used twenty seven thousand, so...
Yeah, so it's about twenty percent.
I thought we gained quite a few this year, you know?
Twenty thousand, twenty seven thousand, I have to say.
This year, numbers are, maybe we got more people, so we got maybe more users.
Well, yeah, no, I mean, that was from January to December of 2011.
We've got quite a few houses this year.
Anything else? One sec. Anything there? Comments? Concerns?
No, sir, I was just bored, and I was just wondering, what time do you need to start?
Seven o'clock.
Well, hey, that's a good, that's a good point, though, Tony, uh, next meeting, my daughter has a band concert at seven o'clock, so can we start the next meeting at five thirty?
No problem.
That should go on May 14?
Fourteen? Fourteen? Yeah.
Yeah. I didn't get a chance to double check those, but I still was going to ask. Looking at them, they didn't look quite right. They're just a couple different scaring.
The I D one, that meeting is going to take place?
No. No, but like Brad said, is, you know, it's supposed to rain on Wednesday, so if it does that, then Thursday or Friday would be a good day, but we can't do it Thursday, so Friday would be the best day for you guys. So, if it does rain, if it doesn't rain, then it won't, then it won't happen Friday anymore, so... W I E wants to meet this week?
Oh, okay.
But John, they want John Keat to meet with us, Brad Wilson, Jeff, Johannes Maher, and John Keat, and if it doesn't rain, then John can meet, so, and it's probably about the same for you guys, anyway, so...
I would invitation, entertain a motion to adjourn.
You may have posters of...
Second. They moved in second to adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Gentlemen?